All right, it's 4:03 and we're opening the first of a series of public hearings. The first one is on the lease purchase easement. I'll read it and then we'll take any input. "Town of Littleton Board of Selectmen proposes to enter into a lease-to-purchase option agreement between Ronald P. Murrow, 2014 revocable living trust with a mailing address of 84 Edencroft Road, Littleton, New Hampshire, 03561. The property is situated in Grafton County, Littleton, New Hampshire, located on River Glen Lane, Tax Map 84, Lot 11. According to RSA 41:14-A, a process authorized by Article IV at the March 2016 town meeting, the proposed sale/purchase requires the review of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, followed by two public hearings. The April 22 public hearing shall be the first of the two required. The second public hearing will be held Monday, May 6, 2019, at 4:30 PM, 120 Main Street, Littleton Community House Center Held Room where we sit today. The Board of Selectmen will vote at the Board of Selectmen's meeting scheduled for Monday, May 20, 2019, at 120 Main Street, Community Center Held Room." So, we have opened up this to public input, if there's any. If there's not, we'll sit around for 14 more minutes and start the next public hearing.
Well, it's hard to comment on something that doesn't have any details. Do we have any more information on it?
Do you have any, or you put it up?
Yeah.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
So, if I heard part of this beyond the Murrow property?
Correct.
And what are we looking at for a cost and a time limit?
Andrew will bring up those details. I actually had that as a question.
Yeah.
Once we had public input, I was gonna dive into it, questions, but...
So, current, it's this parcel that's highlighted right here, it's 7.7 acres. The agreement is for use and control of the parcel with some limitations. For example, the barn is located on the property during the period of the agreement and that would still remain under the control of Mr. Murrow, the property owner. It's a three-year lease with an option to purchase at the end. It would basically preserve the town's right or ability to purchase the lot and takes it off of being available for other uses or other entities. So, this is, the lease is approximately $2,500 annually and that is really based on the annual tax payment. It's pretty much a lot that's used by the community and different community support projects right now. And so, the property owner really was interested in relieving their tax liability for us in exchange for our use and then...
So, it's essentially a 100% abatement of their tax?
Yep, for the parcel, yep. So far, the, as part of the 4114A process, the Conservation Commission has considered and recommended it as of March 25th. The Planning Board took it under consideration and approved it for, or recommended its adoption on the 5th of April, so. And also, this parcel, in addition to being, open this in line, in addition to being used for community events, it's also been, is available for private use. For example, someone's already contacted us to inquire about leasing it for a wedding. So, there's revenue potential by having side control as well. Recently, we were awarded the same area planned NH Design Surett. So, this will be the south side of the river, including this parcel, and we'll be looking at what the community wants to see for this part of the River District.
So, to just help us all get oriented, the brown building on the yellow part, that's the farm?
That's correct.
And the one next to it is the senior center?
That's correct.
Okay, and then next to that is River Glen. And the green line across the island is obviously the covered bridge?
That's right, yeah. And then further down is the suspension bridge.
Oh, I'm just trying to help everybody see what we're seeing.
I have a question here. I'm kind of involved with the farmer's market, so I'm kind of interested in this, of course. And my girls have definitely been very nice towards me. We did have an issue one time and, again, it's not ours to deal with. We had a farmer's market, we have it every Sunday morning, and the market starts at 10:00 in the rest of the month. This particular time was a year ago, I think it was, when shillings decided to have a beer blast on a property the night before.
Yeah, October 5th.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember this or not, but anyways, they had a tent set up and just interfered with that whole thing the next day. I think they realized it afterwards and I guess the 10 people were somewhat complaining. But anyways, created an issue. So, I'm just wondering if you do lease it, will there be some sort of a schedule?
I think that's one of the benefits, too. It's a good point that you bring up. We'll be able to coordinate the schedule more. And we're looking at doing it through a software package that we just purchased for recreation that's gonna, that will help us with leasing all the other fields and, you know, scheduling all the games and everything. In that way, we'll, you know, be able to have a similar...
I was about to say...
Yeah, so, should help with it.
To that issue, the farmer's market, I know, it may be a pain with respect to language, but that first sentence can be interpreted two different ways. Under the lease, it says, "During the term of the option agreement, tenants shall be permitted to utilize the property for public parking and not-for-profit community events excepting the farmer's market." Now, I'm assuming accepting the farmer's market applies to the not-for-profit community events, not the whole thing, but it certainly can be interpreted. I don't know who came up with, comes up with our language, but it's...
So, when the language is developed, it's developed with us and our attorney, but then also the other party. And some language was requested to be put in. The intent of that language is to reserve it, to say the farmer's market has a place there, they're a priority, so.
There are five, I think, what is it, 503?
Yeah.
Chad?
Or 501?
I was thinking of 501C3, but I could be wrong.
So, I'd just make a suggestion in the language. It would be a lot clearer if we just put, "Tenants shall be permitted to utilize the property for public parking and not-for-profit community events and the farmer's market."
Right, I can...
Because otherwise, it's, it can be, I just think it can be misinterpreted.
I'll make that suggestion to the parcel owner.
That and the cost were my only two questions on the topic.
Yep. I could tell you.
There's also the floodplain.
There's portions of it that are in the floodplain, but not very much. Okay, so, we have, this is the appraise. So, the appraised value is what a private party would be likely willing to pay, and that's $474,000. I'm gonna take a stab and say that we probably have it valued at 100, because that's the way, you know, those things go until there's a lot of sales data.
I can look it up here.
Yeah, you could look that up. It'd be great. I know I have, I have evidence here in the tax code.
Okay.
The other exciting thing about this lot is we've already been awarded a Land Water Conservation Fund grant for $200,000. So, the expenditure of the grant funds is timed with the lease option. So, basically, by the end of this lease, we need to either be in motion bringing this project together or no. So, it's all timed together.
Any special events that do take place this year for lease designs against on the bench warrant and compliance?
We don't have any official plans, but definitely it'll be open to different community events. For example, you know, let's say the Dog Park Committee wanted to have a fundraiser. There's always the annual pumpkin festival that takes place down there. But really, it's open to creative input, so.
We've got four more minutes on this, no, I'm sorry, we gotta go half an hour. So, in one minute, I'll be able to open the other one.
Do we have to do a half hour on each one? We do. Just that, okay.
So, just don't worry about it.
Yeah.
So, while the previous public hearing is in motion, I guess we can start the second of the four public hearings. This one is for the Town of Littleton Board of Selectmen proposes to enter into a license agreement with Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as EverSource Energy, a New Hampshire corporation with a principal place of business at 780 North Commercial Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, 03101. Licensee may use said license for access, ingress, and egress to and from Mount Eustis Road and the 150-foot wide existing easement. The property is located in Grafton County, Town of Littleton, Tax Map 99, Lot 17. According to RSA 41:14-A, a process authorized by Article IV at the March 2016 town meeting, the proposed sale/purchase requires the review of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, followed by two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on Monday, May 6, 2019, at 4:45 PM, 120 Main Street, at the Littleton Community Center Held Room, again, where we sit today. The Board of Selectmen will vote at the Board of Selectmen's meeting scheduled for May 20, 2019, at 120 Main Street, Community Center Held Room. So, we open this lease, licensing agreement to public input. I have a...
Let me just go over a couple of things.
Yeah, you can review it. I do have one question on it, but go ahead and review it first.
So, EverSource approached us and wanted to get a permanent easement across the transfer station property to access their transmission line for maintenance purposes. We've reviewed their request, it won't interfere with current transfer station activities, but as you know, the lot behind this has also been recently given to LIWC for future development, and there is a right-of-way, a shared right-of-way that's gonna go through there. So, rather than issue a permanent easement, the town decided that it would be in the best interest to do a license. The license can be canceled if it's determined or renegotiated if there's an issue in the future with interference. The proposal is for EverSource to make a payment annually of $3,500 and I described the license procedure. So, that's basically it.
So, the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board have both weighed in and support this?
That's correct. So, on April 5th, the Planning Board issued a letter of support for the project after their review, and on April 15th, the Conservation Commission also expressed their unanimous support for the project.
All right, I got a question on language again.
Yeah.
I don't want in consideration anyone a payment of $3,500 to be used for community and economic development. At the risk of upsetting my town manager, nobody supports economic development more than I do, but why are we being dictated on how that money's used?
Just really to put aside some funding that we wouldn't have otherwise. Really, we have very little dedicated to that and it could just be an annual source that we could use for grant match.
I'm open to it, but I'm, I just, I don't typically like things that tie our hands on how we can spend the money in the town's best interest. So, I'm open to it when we get to the discussion stage. I don't think we have to get into it now, but that's just, I think everybody's aware of that.
Sure.
And this, this gives access, just looking at the map here, so they would go through the transfer station driveway, and it looks like they would go to where the composting and the, I think there's some bins like where the metal is and such. Now, would they have a key, like for when the dates that it's closed? We would give them a key and...
This actually already is in place. So, the, this is, this would formalize what's already happening. They've been doing this for years and they have a right-of-way consultant who is kind of years later saying, hey, we need to preserve some of this.
Yeah.
These are officially being...
So, now we have 11 minutes to wait to open the next one.
I have a quick question on this one. Is this the proposal by EverSource a couple of years ago that the town passed? I think there was some concern that might be related to the old past or there's still some questions. I was just curious.
I'm not aware of it. It could have been.
Were you aware of anything?
Answer's no. The answer's no. To someone, from someone who knows.
Is the process of licensing versus another reading today, does that subject to a utility issues stay under the laws?
Nothing, where is it?
Subject to a utility, bearings coming down later on, that they would have more rights to this?
If, like, using a license, we're able to revoke that when the, but really, this is just kind of a conveyance of a temporary right across that property. And then, any conveyance is considered, you know, subject to the RSA 4114A process, which is the two public hearings and then a vote.
What was your meeting today?
It was awesome.
Yeah, but how was it, I said?
It was good. You're gonna fund the whole project?
Do we have to go back to this one before we close it?
Was that how much it came out?
Yeah, but we can start the third one at 4:30, but then at 4:33, we gotta close this one.
While we're waiting, to encourage anybody this Saturday, if you don't have anything to do, to come out and help do cleanup. We start at Remick Park at 8:30 and the police officers go over with us potential dangers, what to look for, and to notify probably be Chris if we see anything suspicious, but it's, it's a good time. And then we only work for like four hours and then we finish up with a barbecue.
At Remick Park?
At Remick Park. So, if you can come out and help, it'd be, it'd be awesome.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
That's a good public service announcement. I should probably, I mean, people are, I think are aware about the sub-5 construction that's happening now. There's some traffic delays on Union Street.
Yeah.
Something to watch out for.
How many weeks do they plan that?
We, we're gonna be done, we have to be done with everything by, what was it, early September, I believe, but I think we're gonna move on to the side streets. No, that was last year, we were gonna be done by September 15, I think it was. This year, there's a paving deadline that's coming up because the transportation is going to be paving Union Street, I believe.
Well, I was just, I was thinking more along like with Union Street and, I mean, this week's nice because it's school vacation, but...
They'll probably have significant progress. I'll have to look at my report to see exactly, but...
Just hoping, you know, or should we have the school notify parents that they may see delays in the morning or in the afternoon or something?
Yeah, the contractor, I believe, has been working closely with the school, so they would know. I think that probably the push is this week to get out of the way. I see the side roads all marked up for cutting.
Yeah, I saw that today.
Yeah.
On this, Kane, are you simply gonna say that, state that it's borrowed from Piermont?
What's that?
Miss Kane, you're just gonna say that it's borrowed from Piermont until the other one's on?
Yeah, I was gonna tell her ahead of time.
You mean publicly or just...
No.
Oh, okay.
And then the other piece of information, which is when we do have it, you're gonna tell the family that it's supposed to come back if it's not achieved, so you can issue it to the next person.
Yeah.
Just wanna avoid that and just keep buying it.
So, when we get to that, I'm just gonna read the, what do you call, proclamation?
Yeah.
Give it to her and order her to post.
Yeah.
The cane, whatever it's called.
You know the originals were 14-carat, solid 14-carat gold.
Those would be expensive.
That's why they go missing, I think.
Something to keep an eye out for at Fleymar.
I know.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Can you imagine finding one of those?
New?
Somebody has, a few times, because every town had one, and most don't now, so.
Must be up in the attic somewhere, yeah. Or it's a cold winter.
I'll show you some pictures of Tram.
Yeah.
Did he show you any of those?
Yeah.
Supposed to read this whole thing on this one?
The CDBG? I think...
Everything. Yeah, you do, because it has more...
Yeah, this is the first public hearing.
Yeah, so I'm gonna read everything until the...
Okay.
Because the rest of that is today.
But you don't have to read the tires.
No.
And I threw the motions in the packet, but they're also sealed in the package. So, it was actually four motions, actually.
It's not going through this whole...
No, no.
Please take a paragraph?
I know it.
Am I gonna have the original document to read rather than this copy so I can give it to her?
What's that?
The proclamation.
Do you have the original proclamation?
I just saw it. Where is it? Someone has it.
I have a copy.
Oh, it's right up here on the table.
Oh, okay. All right, there you go. Good. Since guys.
Do you want Chad to grab it for you so you can have it?
I can go over it. So, I had to hand it to her anyway, so she should get up there and she should be seated there listening.
Tires, inclusion.
I'm not gonna make her get up and come toss the cane at it.
No, you gotta be respectful.
Actually...
What?
Take a look at the top line on that. This is the CDBG. If you want, I could do it over it.
Is he talking like this here?
What are you saying? I'm wondering a little from opening this. Are you telling me to do something different?
We need to make sure that this gets in the minutes, so...
So, we have to read all of this?
Yeah, if you want, I could read it, because then I can put in the information as we go.
Okay, so I'll read this first section and then I'll turn it over to you to read the notes for inclusion.
That'll take a half an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
One's for work, one's for home. Yeah, because there's so much private information with the bank one.
Or wait, we probably have a, one of you should make the motion to close the hearing when we get to here, and then somebody should motion the second, get to here.
Do we have to do that on each of these?
Yeah. Just, just the CDBG one, right?
Yeah.
All right, it's 4:30, so I'm going to open the third of four public hearings. This is for the Community Development Block Grant Application. The Town of Littleton Board of Selectmen will hold three consecutive public hearings on Monday, April 22, 2019, at 4:30 PM in the Community Center Held Room located at 120 Main Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, 03561, to hear public comment on a Community Development Block Grant feasibility study grant proposal to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to $500,000 annually is available on a competitive basis for housing, public facilities, economic development, and emergency activities that directly benefit low and moderate income persons. Up to $12,000 is available for feasibility study grants. Municipalities are eligible to apply for a microenterprise assistance grant without having it count against the town's cap for any other CDBG projects. The proposal to be heard includes, one, a proposed feasibility study grant for up to $12,000 in CDBG funds. The funds will be used to pay for the completion of a preliminary engineering architectural analysis in order to develop cost estimates for the required improvements at the Opera House for a cultural arts center. Two, review and adoption of the Town's, Town of Littleton's and Housing and Community Development Plan. Number three, review and adoption of the Town of Littleton's anti-displacement and relocation plan for this project. That having been said now, I'm going to turn this over to Andrew to start going, going through the notes for inclusion in this discussion. But before you get started on that, I'm going to, unless there's any other input, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we need a motion on that or can I just close it? I can just close it. I'm gonna close the public hearing which started 4:03 regarding the lease purchase option on the Murrow property. regarding the lease purchase option on the Murrow property. Okay, that is closed. So now, Andrew, go ahead and continue with this.
Okay, so this is the first public hearing for the CDBG project overview. Uh, handouts for the public hearings are available at the town office. Uh, the community development block grant funds are available to municipalities on a competitive basis for economic development. Public facility and housing rehabilitation projects and planning grants that primarily benefit low and moderate income persons. The Town of Littleton is eligible for up to five hundred thousand dollars a year for public facility housing rehabilitation. Up to five hundred thousand dollars a year for economic development projects, as well as up to five hundred thousand dollars a year in emergency funds. Planning grants are available for up to twelve thousand dollars per year. Municipalities are eligible to apply for a micro enterprise assistance grant without having it count against, uh, the town's cap for any other CDBG project. This is a feasibility study application to the Community Development Finance Authority for twelve thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen community development block grant funds. The funds be, will be used to pay for the completion of preliminary engineering and architectural analysis in order to develop cost estimates for the required improvements at the Opera House for a cultural art, cultural arts center. This project conforms with Littleton, Town of Littleton's proposed housing and community development plan goals of restoring and preserving properties which have historic, cultural, architectural, or aesthetic value. Solving community problems with long-term benefits and innovative solutions. And three, support efforts to develop local businesses which provide jobs, goods, and services needed by the residents of the town and the region. This is where you'd ask for any questions or comments.
So it's open to public comment. Questions?
If, if they go through with this, isn't that on the National Register? As far as repays and things?
This is, it, it is, uh, subject to a, uh, State of New Hampshire, uh, I believe, L chip easement. So before we do any work, right now, what we have to do is submit work plans.
Everything.
And then they pre-approve any work that's.
Right.
Yeah, so.
And, and you still have to, they have the rights to consider making any changes or recommendations on it. But it has to coincide with the, the building has to be kept in the same kind of, uh, format that it is anyway. But I know that they've had to do it more than once, and I didn't know whether this thing would have any effect on.
Definitely, yeah. So right now, um, for example, uh, recently, we worked with, uh, George, um, Mitchell. And he, we have a number of projects that we're planning the Opera House. They can be pretty small. If it's going to, um, you know, touch or alter the piece of property, even if there's something that doesn't, um, doesn't go substantially do anything different. Like installation of cameras is something that we were looking at and, uh, that have, they have to be, uh, approved and submitted in a, in a formal plan.
So would that have any effect on this at all?
It would be part of the process. So what we would do is, while we're designing the process, we'd work closely.
I want to know, I know it's part of the process, but I want to know, would it have any effect on it, that's all. As a result of what they've already considered out of town.
Yeah, it, it, it would have a result because we would have to design in accordance with the restrictions that are.
So whatever you do have to be in accordance with that?
Correct, yeah.
Let's sit around for another nine minutes.
And when you do close these, you do have to do it by motion, first and second.
This one?
This, yeah, yeah.
The others, but did I, I didn't have to do the last one?
I know that with these you do, because they want to submit it in the minutes. They'll review that as part of your application, so.
Oh, I'll ask a question. Uh, what, what is being thought of?
Necessarily a final part of the project, but, um.
Sounds like I should have listened to that.
Yeah.
That was the official river.
Yeah.
Probably, I have some old drawings of that. And then there's also, um, they're looking at, uh, like it says, entertainment venue and supporting components. So, um, they're looking at having a bar, another warming, uh, kitchen, so that, you know, entities could come in and lease it for events. And, uh, it would also be a secondary space for, um, so if there's a larger event in the upstairs, uh, venue, then, and say, upstage players needed a space to rehearse for an upcoming show, they could potentially use a smaller space if it was, uh, available. So, um, part of the idea too is the cultural economy, supporting cultural economy. So you create, um, spaces that could be used for classroom setting. So for example, uh, some of the spaces down there, uh, could be used to say, have voice coach lessons or, you know, costume design, uh, classes, or different, different aspects of, uh, supporting cultural arts, performing arts.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
What's the necessity to apply for this seven million dollars in CDBG grant? To this is something that you, as a town manager, uh, you know, kind of with a better, you know, idea for the, for the tax paid little town? Or what, what, what is it? Why, why you gonna, you, why you gotta ask a seven million dollars for this, for this particular grant? What's the reason?
So I, I would like to ask for half a million, but right now, we're only asking for twelve.
For what?
Twelve, twelve thousand, yeah. So in this is.
That eventually is gonna be.
It, it depends on, um.
Would you get it by the combine, you know, it's, you're gonna reach out to the house.
This is just, this is just an application for, of twelve thousand dollars to, to do, to do a study.
To start.
Or a design and study.
Yeah. If you know, my, what's the reason? Why, do you really think that, uh, they have so many, you know, that they have so many people in Little Town that they really need to add this particular housing, you know, project? In your opinion, you know, I mean, you can't ask it for another grant for something else instead of.
Well, I think it's, I think the, the important thing about this is that the last few years, there's been an attempt and, and fairly successfully to, uh, make better use of the Opera House and get more utilization out of it, get revenues from it. Uh, so this is just one more step in trying to accomplish that. Without having to come up with money to do it, to do that study ourselves at first and see what else we can do to make it more of a, uh, 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 facility that can actually provide, provide revenue in some cases.
This is gonna have to with the taxation or anything else, you know, in the future for the taxpayer will, you know, I mean, uh.
It's, it's kind of.
Yeah, well, this, this doesn't, but, but whatever, whatever, if something is proposed or designed that we would like to pursue, that certainly could. But this right here is just the, the money to find out if there's a way that we can better utilize the property.
We're trying to utilize some net, or some resources that are in the region anyways, at no cost. We've got a gentleman that'll be coming in and kind of showing us, well, if you set it up this way, and he runs a very successful, um, arts. So he, he'd be willing to do that for us without costing us anything.
I, I have to say that, but for the regulars, for the regular, in Little Town, everything that starts, starts very small. It's like, you know, when we started the real estate, when we started meal free, and stuff like that. And then all of the sun, you know, boom, explode, and, you know, people, they kind of.
Well, it'll only explode if people vote to, to have it explode. And most of those things are approved at town meeting. I don't think that.
That's what I'm talking about, because, you know, you add it to the one.
If it makes sense, if it makes sense to the, to the, to, to us as a board and to the voters as a whole, then, yeah. If it doesn't, then it won't.
And one of the, one of the things that we, we're finding with cultural arts activities is that every time you have a, a cultural arts event, you, you have a really significant economic impact for the surrounding businesses, but also, um, it's a quality of life issue. Uh, there's also a taxation issue in that, uh, we generate more rooms and meals tax, which then can come back to the town and offset, uh, some of the local taxpayers' contribution to the, uh, to the overall tax rate, so.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you another thing. You know, when you, let's just say that you guys approved this particular grant, right? Approved it to, for the town manager to apply for this particular grant. Because as I said, I know you guys have had approval, right, before you send this in with the application, right?
That's correct.
Now, if I present to you, you know, chairman, with, uh, some kind of, uh, you know, some, a paperwork that, uh, let's just say, you know, majority, not majority, but, you know, a, 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 a good amount of people in the town, they don't agree, you know, or they wish you guys had not applied for this particular grant. What's your position on that?
Uh, well, I won't take a position on a hypothetical situation, but I certainly would, you know, would welcome that information and take it into consideration on, on my position on it.
You mean a petition, it can stop you guys to change your mind, right?
I have no idea if a petition can stop it or not. I, I don't know from a legal perspective. I'm just saying, you, you're saying if you presented something to the board.
Yes.
That showed a significant number of people who were against it.
Yes.
I'm saying that I would consider that, um, and when making the decision. Would it necessarily stop me? I, I can't say. I'm not gonna speak on a hypothetical, but I certainly would, would take the information.
You're gonna take it.
And that's part of this, that's part of what these public hearings are for, is to get that input.
You would take in consideration, you know, that, that, you know, what the people are saying and, uh, you know, to proceed or not, or stop this.
That, we, we take into consideration?
You guys both, you know.
Take into consideration any comments that come through this public, uh, input section. It is four forty-five, so before we continue on with this one, I wanna close out, unless there's other comments on the, uh, which one was this? Uh, the license agreement with public service, uh, and Eversor, uh, D B A Eversource. I will close out that public input of that. And I will open the last of these four. Public hearing, please be advised that the Littleton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at four forty-five P M. At the Littleton Community Center Held Room, one twenty Main Street, Littleton, New Hampshire. For the purpose of reviewing and adoption of the following amended town traffic ordinance. Copies of the amended ordinance will be posted at the town office and the Littleton Police Department. They will also be posted on the town's website. So, um, I would, uh, welcome any, just an overview of what this changes, uh, just Chief Smith? Well, why don't you give us a rundown of the overview of this?
Okay, yeah, so, um, the parking commission, um, is nearly done with their official, uh, report of the study, the parking study. And, um, there's a number of recommendations in there, and they would like, their preference would be to have them all come to you after they've adopted the final recommendations. Um, what's happened with this is, it's actually just a practical issue. One of the recommendations is to increase, uh, some of the fines. And, uh, we're running out of tickets, so we have to reorder our tickets. And, uh, if we order them now, we'll end up with quite a few that are outdated. So to save some money, uh, the, the recommendation is to basically, under section five of the traffic ordinance, and I can go over that in a little more detail if you want, section six, um, and section seven. And, yeah, section five, six, and seven is to increase the, any of the fines that are five dollars to ten dollars.
Yeah.
And then, um, under section seven, article, uh, five, uh, to increase that from ten to twenty-five dollars. Uh, so, and I can just go over the.
That's for parking on the sidewalks, crosswalks.
Yes, yep, blocking across walking. Um, so the, the pedestrian crossings, it's saying increase, uh, uh, from five to ten. Uh, no person shall cross any street within a compact area, Town of Littleton, at any point, other than a marked, uh, crosswalk from five to ten. Uh, at intersections, walk, uh, and don't walk signal or installed in an operation should be unlawful for pedestrians to cross the way unless the signal indication permits such crossing. Uh, that'll go from five to ten. The two-hour parking, uh, metered spaces, that would go from five to ten. The, uh, failure to prop, deposit the proper amount subject to the operator and owner of the vehicle over time parking shall, is gonna go from five to ten. Let's see, uh, such person to remain placed in a parking space adjacent to a meter, such meters displaying a signal. Okay, so again, expired, uh, time on a meter from five to ten. Visible signal where service, prime facia, illegal parking space, S C C owner and or operator. Again, it's a really expired, uh, meter under section plus, uh, section six, five, or section six, six, from five to ten. Feeding the meters from five to ten. Improper parking, so vehicles that are parked, not parked within the lines of a designated meter spot, they're gonna go from five to ten. And then, uh, it shall be unlawful to park on the wrong side of the street, that'll go from five to ten. Again, parking in a non-designated area, um, it's from five to ten. And then unlawful to park on any sidewalk or crosswalk is twenty. And that one's raised from ten to twenty-five because it's felt to be such a safety issue, um, if someone, if someone violates that one, so.
So what it boils down to, jaywalking's going to ten bucks and parking fines are going up to ten bucks?
Yep, let's sum it up.
And do we expect that to be, was that intended to be one of the recommendations of the parking committee?
Yeah, we have a, a member here, thirteen members.
Yes.
That was it, that is the intention.
So because we don't make a final vote on this until after the second public hearing, do we have enough tickets?
We do. We've, we've started collecting them from certain cars, uh, so.
Stop issuing tickets.
Yes. This doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't? Oh.
So we can go for it.
Oh, that's right, we're supposed to vote on this tonight.
There you go.
So, but the, but the public hearing still goes for half an hour? And we can, but we can vote on it tonight? Okay. Well, so right now, we have opened this, uh, parking, uh, ord, traffic ordinance, uh, public hearing and the, uh, CDBG grant, public hearing. If anyone wants to chat, go ahead.
Do you have any record as to how much money in each one of those categories the town has brought in?
I do know that it's been, um, declining, but I don't know how much.
Wasn't it eighteen, I thought, my, why is eighteen thousand sticking in my head? But that's not, that's not by category.
I don't know, by category.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Austin might have that information. We, we never broke it down that far.
Part of the reason why I'm asking out it is, it's difficult for these people on the street, even with the meters, to make living. Uh, and I, I think that there's some considerations about even doing away with meters, and I don't know that that's ever gonna happen. But consequently, raising the cost of, makes it still more difficult for the outsiders to come in here, depending on what it is. I'm, I'm not on a committee to do what you'd like, but I, I just think that, uh, Littleton, you can very easily get a bad reputation from the point of a cost factor for having the public coming in here and making use. Especially if, if, I don't know what, that's in comparison of other towns. That would be another thing that I would ask about. Do you have any idea of other towns in, up there?
Yeah, parking commission.
We're, we're way low, way low. Where, where is the bottom, uh, parking fines? That's the reason why we decided it's time that we joined the rest of the world in increasing the fines. But not to the point where like Burlington's did, or somewhere down here, you know, in the country. That would be, no, going from five to ten dollars on a fine. I think it was brought, Mary, wasn't it ironic on the fact that some of these Canadians come down and they can park on the street and pay a fine, it'd still be cheap.
Yeah. Put a bargain, pay a fine and park all day for five dollars.
So, I mean, we need to control this a little bit more and, you know, make some sense out of this, that's why.
That's not true, I'm just bringing it to the attention, but I do think that that really does have an effect as far as trying to have people on the street kind of making a living out of it.
Then the other issue that we discussed in. Then the other issue that we discussed in that line was the fact that employees park on the street for $5 a day or whatever they pay the fine and that, you know.
There's a deterrent, there's a deterrent for business.
Take away from the people that want to get to the stores.
The jaywalking thing, who enforced it? I know Austin does the parking line. It's pretty. People jaywalk a lot around here. I mean, I do, I'm guilty of it myself. But is that enforced by police officer or is you empowering Austin's?
I couldn't answer whether Austin was empowered to do so, but the police officers are.
Right, I know, I realize that, but I mean.
Might be, I'd have to check.
Not that, I mean, I wonder how.
I can tell you one time I've gotten a jaywalking ticket in a community down in southern New Hampshire. And the police officer told me that it was, the selectman requested that the police department pay more attention to it. So they started handling how jaywalking fines. I'm not suggesting that the selectman ought to be doing, saying that, but I know where you're coming from. I don't know, it surprised me to even get one.
To me, it kind of follows the personal responsibility, accountability thing. If I get by higher than I'm supposed to be, it came on me.
Well, and this is already in the ordinance anyways. It's just addressing me the dollar amount.
I understand, I understand, but I don't know how often it's given.
Well, when I got stopped, when a police officer stopped me for jaywalking, I started laughing. I thought he was joking.
I think there is a difference. You know, in the wintertime, you look at it, I think they painted those crosswalks green, which is very good for people to be able to see. You go out there right now, there's no green. There's nothing there. And in the wintertime, you can hardly see it. So it may be something that you should be looking at, it's like a parking situation out of it. It said you should pack in the wintertimes from November to April and you can pack here. You can't pack in the wintertime. Maybe they should be looking at that next round because of the availability, being able to see where you've got to be able to walk down the crosswalk.
Well, these, that's, those are discussions for the parking committee. And I'm sure they're, they've been working hard for a long time, so I'm sure they've considered all those things.
And there is signage, I believe, as well. There is signage for the crosswalks as well. So even if you can't see it on the road, when you're on the sidewalk, you can look up and say, hey, there's a sidewalk, there's a crosswalk. In the bump outs, yeah.
Diane's got a question.
I'm sorry.
The community that we go to in the wintertime, they have some remote crossing, crosswalks. And there's a lot of traffic on it, pedestrians going back and forth and people riding their bikes and stuff. And you're just going down 35 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, and there's, you know, you don't see these crosswalks. You're not even paying attention. But they have one of those lights that you hit and it flashes so that, so you know that someone is ready. Some of these remote areas, do you think we could consider some of those? I know it may not be, but we did have someone killed trying to cross one of the remote areas that isn't necessarily downtown. So I'm just wondering if that might be considered or at least I want to bring it to.
I appreciate that, but again, I think that's part of this whole, the committee's review of this.
Well, there's the parking commission.
There's two of us today.
Two of us. All right, thank you.
Scott?
Some of these questions are exactly why we put in the parking commission, not to be decided here. Without an increased fine, it's proven that increased punishment is a deterrent in and of itself. Not just for jaywalking, but overall.
The other, you know, I would like to say at this time, apologies, I'm going to. Is I think we should have a little bit more police presence in the commercial area here. And you talked about your jaywalking. There would be the answer to that. I don't see enough of it. I've been here all my life. God, I'm old. And I've seen, you know, through the years, cops walking up and down the beat and so on and checking doors and that kind of stuff. You don't see that too much today. I don't want to go into it too hard because I don't want to beat them. I just think that there could be a warmer presence because they have moved out of town and we don't have it with the Opera House anymore. So I think they need to be focused in that as well as the drug.
Did you have a question back there?
No, it was just a comment about the traffic lights. You have to go on down on Union Street for a light. And they're not, it's not always the most effective deterrent to even get people to slow down.
Yeah.
But again, like Scott said, that's a discussion.
Excuse me. Who came up with this amendment to the traffic ordinance? The town, the manager?
The dollar amount, I mean? I think it's, it's part of the recommendation that's not come to us yet by the parking committee. Is that what it's called, the parking committee?
Commission.
Commission. Yes, Littleton, the Littleton, the Littleton Parking Commission.
Did you just go to regular? I agree 100% on this particular ordinance.
Thank you. In one minute, I will entertain a motion to, to come out of public since they were, since the organization wants us to close the public discussion on the CDVG. Actually, I will entertain one now.
I will make that motion to close the public hearing on the project portion of the CDVG block grant hearing.
Have a second? Do I have a second?
Uh, you, yes.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous to close the public hearing for the CDVG grant? So then we have 15 more minutes to go on the traffic ordinance. Oh, do we have to?
You have to make a motion to open the third public hearing regarding the residential anti-displacement and relocation.
So that goes another half hour?
No, that's probably the same here.
Okay. We'll make sure.
Screw it up, we're going to have to have it over. We're halfway into the traffic ordinance. Chief, do you want to make any comments?
They asked me for comments?
If you want to, I mean.
No, I mean, this was, this was the traffic commission's study and everything. The only input I believe I gave was on the blocking of the crosswalk. They felt that it should be by party discussed that.
Okay.
I mean, penalty for restricted, restricted area in front of the crosswalk is X amount of dollars. Actually, parking on a crosswalk should be the same.
There was a good.
Or a side block.
Crosswalk.
Tom had a good question too about the jaywalking piece and the authority.
To issue a ticket?
Yeah.
What's the question?
As far as Austin having authority for that? No, he does not. Okay.
No, he's just for parking enforcement, that's it.
We want to open the regular selectmen. Are we ready for that first thing yet or?
I saw her come in and done.
Yeah, I did see her.
Well, while that public hearing is still going, why don't we open the regular, regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting? We've got a bunch of meetings.